And now it is time of six o'clock, minute or two after for me to call to order. The regular meeting of the Macon Bibb County Commission for Tuesday, December the first. Delighted that all of you could be with us this evening. And as is our custom and practice, we'll start off with an invocation. And Commissioner Joe Allen has agreed to lead us in prayer. Commissioner Allen, let me call on you at this point, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. I dear kind most heavenly Father, the world is this year comes to an end. As you know, dear Lord, 2020 has been a year that no one really wants to go through again. From COVID to the killings, to unrest in our, in our country, in our world. We just had so many problems this year, dear Lord. And I don't think really we've come to you as much as we should have. I'm asking that you watch over us, dear Lord, watch over this county, watch over this new mayor, this new board, the old board that's going to be here. Watch over those of us that are leaving, dear God. Watch over our families and dear God, lead them in the right direction. Lead our new government, whoever it be up in Washington, in the right direction. Bring our country, our world together and, and bring them more close to you, dear God. You can do this, all just the Bible says, come to you and ask. And that's what we're doing. Watch over us, dear Lord, we need your loving hand. Asking and holding me pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes and the minutes of our pre-commissioned meeting of November 17th. And our regular commission meeting of November the 17th have been prepared and distributed. Are there any changes or corrections that needed to be made? Oh, you know what, I, I messed up. I was going to get the clerk to call the roll, be sure we had a quorum to vote on the minutes. So let me, let me back up just a half a second and get the clerk to call the roll. Please unmute yourself and answer verbally so, so that everybody listening can determine we've got a quorum of commissioners.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner Schlesinger?
Here.
Commissioner Lucas?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Bivens?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Shepherd is not with us tonight. Commissioner Watkins?
Here.
And Mayor Protem Tillman?
Here.
So we've got nine out of 10, missing only Commissioner Shepherd. And we do wish him well, understand he's continuing to get medical treatment. That now approval of the minutes, so any changes, corrections, additions or deletions or discussion about the minutes? If not, can I get a motion on the minutes?
I moved.
Second.
Got a motion, motion and second to approve the minutes, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Eyes have it and the minutes are approved. That takes us then to reports from our standing committees. And the first committee that we'll call on is operations and finance. And that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The operations and finance committee met last November 24th and took the following action. We had one item on the agenda, the improvement, the approval of a purchase agreement with major and associates in the amount of $59,645 for the purchase and installation of an access control and security system for the government center. This concludes the operations and finance report.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. That takes us then to economic and community development committee. And that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our vice chair chaired a portion of those minutes of that meeting, the previous meeting. And so our report is kind of short and this vice chair, there are other things that need to be reported, if you would please do that. But we approved the economic and community development committee consists of Lucas Schlesinger, Bivens, Shepherd and Watkins. We approved the minutes of our previous meeting and we considered an ordinance to establish an ad hoc advisory board of equity and stability for the purpose of advising the commission with respect to the pending equity assessment program solicitation and to provide guidance toward creating a more equitable and just community and to provide for the memberships. This was sponsored by Commissioner Virgil Watkins. Mr. Vice Chair, would you report on the actions taken on that?
On what, I'm sorry?
On the action taken on the ordinance that was considered while you were chairing the meeting.
If you've got it in front of you, why don't you just report for me?
Okay, we were going to play tag team here. Okay, that ordinance was approved and that ends the report of economic and community development.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas, appreciate that report. Only report from public safety is every, every day is a public safety appreciation day.
Every day is public safety, even more so now.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that takes us into facilities and engineering. Chairman Jones, will you give us that report, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Let me get my piece of paper in front of me, I just misplaced it. So these engineering also met on November the 24th. The committee authorized a supplemental budget for parking places for the tax commissioner's office in the amount of, the lease amount of $6,676 per month. The committee approved re-appropriating $66,527 that supplemental budget appropriation for fund balance, provide for the lease of those spaces. Committee also approved accepting approximately 28.37 acres of land located at 1,000 Boulevard for the Gateway Park project. The committee approved a contract with Daktronics for the installation of a new scoreboard system for the centralplex in the amount of $785,100. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Chairman Jones, appreciate that report. That brings us now to public comments. I understand we have one public comment and I'll ask the attorney's office to read that comment for us that was received by email.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm filling in for Michael McNeil, who's, as I said, has raised these public comments reading to an art form. So I'm not going to be as good, but it's got one public comment from Regina Smith. It's quote, "in Ray to special event license and the conduct of officers." That is the public comment, Mr. Mayor.
And just as an addition to that, I'll say that, that our clerk tried to contact Ms. Smith to ask if there were any additional comments, that's more like subject matter and has not had a response yet. But that was the comment that we did receive from, from Ms. Smith, we wanted to read that. But that takes us now to the consent agenda. There is only one item on the consent agenda, consent agenda, and that is a alcohol license by the Mellow Mushroom on Bowman Road. It is for liquor mixed drinks, beer and wine to be consumed on the premise. I understand that there is new ownership or a new agent of record, Melanie Kappel, that has filed the application for these three beverages. The application is accompanied by the planning and zoning compliance certificate, the measurement forms from the county engineer and the ad that ran in the Telegraph as well as the sheriff's certification of a satisfactory background check. The committee of the whole recommends issuance of the license as requested. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the issuance of the license to the Mellow Mushroom as requested, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The eyes have it and the license will be issued as requested. That now takes us to old, old business and the first two items of old business concerned the veto of the mayor on two items. And I'll really ask the attorney to, to take over at this point. My understanding is they appear automatically on the agenda and, and do not need a motion and second because they appear here or do they need a motion and second?
They do need a motion and second.
So they appear on the, on the agenda, so, so I guess the appropriate motion would be to override the veto. Right. And the first, let me get the clerk to read the first item that I vetoed so that we can know which one we're talking about.
Okay, I got it. Sorry. A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to rename the Macon City Auditorium as the C. Jack Ellis City Auditorium in honor of C. Jack Ellis's contributions to his community and for other lawful purposes.
Is, is there a motion?
There is, I'd like to move to override.
Lucas, is there a second?
Second.
By Watkins, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. I anticipate a close call, so I'm not going to try to do it by voice vote. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? If you're in favor of overriding the veto, you would vote yes. If you're not in favor, if you're not in favor of overriding, you'd vote no. And that would sustain the veto.
Is there a discussion, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mayor Protem, absolutely, I didn't mean to shortchange that. Got a motion and second, so now discussion, yes, sir. Let me call on you, Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Trying to turn up my volume on my New Dell computer that the Macon Bibb government has issued. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
This was a resolution after speaking with probably, I know all of the incoming commission members and all but maybe one of the current commissioners. We submitted a, a petition of signatures while others were out on social media chiming in and, and asking for input. We were out collecting signatures, received over 500 signatures of support. The whole idea was, I repeat again, was, Mr. Mayor, even in having conversations with you, there was no, by elected officials or incoming, there was no opposition or it seemed that this was, people understood what we were trying to do, I was trying to do with, with not only elected officials, but military people that have, had served. And so I would just say this because I, I said that I didn't want to go back and forth whether it was with any incoming administration or even you, Mr. Mayor, we've talked extensively about this. I would just say, I just don't think no mayor should make a decision as to what you name in honor of someone. Because there are many folks that's living, that stuff is named after. And for a mayor especially, or another elected official to make a decision and say, what is to be named in somebody's honor? I just don't think they need to have made that decision. And I think we're here today because the relationship that I've always thought that I've had with you, Mr. Mayor, that we could have worked this out even before it had got this far. And so I just wanted to say that and share that for the record and I'll move to override the veto. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, is, is there further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, Madam Clerk. And the only thing I'll say while she gets ready to call the roll is that my decision was really not made out of any personal animosity toward Mayor Ellis. I certainly want to say that. But I did receive a lot of comments about it, overwhelming number of comments were opposed to renaming the city auditorium. So that's where, that's where we are with that, all right.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, were, in those comments, were there any alternatives that were brought up as to what, what, you know, because I mean, I've heard a lot of folks say, we should have named the terminal station after him. And so if you want to clarify and clear up that people were really not opposed to naming something after him, but folks felt that according to you and your, and emails that I received, they didn't like the fact that the auditorium. And folks knew what he had done with the terminal station and they all felt that would be appropriate. But that would have been up to, none of those members called me, let's say that, I mean, in talking to the director. So none of those board members or anybody else called to inquire about that. But, and we tried to explain to folks that we were naming something that we own. We no longer own the terminal station and that was the first choice of what we wanted to name something in honor. But I only spoke to the director, the board members and, and to my knowledge, that wasn't shared with any of the board members. And so that would be something they would have to take up. So I just wanted to share that and, and from you, Mr. Mayor, you can speak for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to share with everybody this, these, this petition. And I know that there are over 500 signatures on these petitions that are requesting support for the renaming. Some people have called me and they have said that they feel disrespected. And because the Macon Bibb's first black mayor was to be honored in this way, they felt honored and respected. And by this veto, they feel very much dishonored and disrespected as well as 57% of the population of Macon Bibb County. So I just wanted to share that and ask if there's somebody that can search your heart and see the benefit to memorializing Macon's first and only black mayor on that, that building. Many of us have facilities named for us. Commissioner Allen has a fire station, Commissioner Bivens, there's a fire station. The late Commissioner Lonzie Edwards, a fire station. I was just so honored to have my name placed on the senior citizens center. And who knows, maybe if, if this veto is not overridden, maybe there's a possibility of adding former Mayor Ellis's name to the senior citizens center. I don't know, I just know that there needs to be a prominent, thank you, a place where we honor and show our respect to Macon's first and it looks like only black mayor. And so those are, those are my comments. So someone search your heart and vote to override with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas, is there further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll. If you're in favor of overriding the veto, you'd vote yes. If you want to sustain the veto, you'd vote no.
Commissioner Nguyen, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Schlesinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Bivens, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Tillman, how do you vote?
Five, five yeses, it requires six votes to override the veto, so the veto is sustained. That takes us to item B of the agenda on the old business, which is the veto of the mayor of the anti-discrimination ordinance. I'll get the clerk to read that by caption and put it up so we know what we're talking about.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend Article 3 of Chapter 2 of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances now reserved for the purpose of establishing protections against discrimination in places of public accommodation and for other lawful purposes.
Is there a motion to override the mayor's veto?
So I move.
Second.
By Schlesinger's second, I, I think I heard Watkins's voice, so second.
That was Lucas's deep voice.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, you know.
But Watkins can be listed as the second.
All right, so it was Lucas, Lucas and Schlesinger. No, I heard Schlesinger first, so who is it? And Watkins, okay, Watkins. Very good, so is there further discussion now? Got a motion and second to override the veto, further discussion? Well, let me, let me just say that this was a tough decision. I was inundated with emails about it and I do think that the, that the legislation was well intended. But as I pointed out in my veto message, I, I think it was too late in the term. The next administration had already been elected. I think that the, the time was too short for people to have adequate input to their elected representatives about it. And I thought that the legislative process was flawed in that amendments were not welcomed. In fact, there were none from the time that it was introduced. So while I feel like the anti-discrimination ordinance should be pursued by the next administration, I, I feel like this particular ordinance was badly flawed and had some, some problems, was misunderstood and had a lot of ambiguity that would have created more issues than it resolved, so I vetoed it. So no personal animosity, I do think we need to be an open, welcoming, non-discriminating community that welcomes all people in and does not discriminate. But this was not the vehicle to do that, so I vetoed it. Is there further conversation?
Yeah, on this, thank you, this is two foot two. First, you veto the naming of a public facility, probably built by black folks that was to be named for the Macon's one and only black mayor. And then there's a veto of protection for 100% of the citizens. Now you, you tell me that you don't have someone in your family that needs the protections that are included in this civil rights legislation. You tell me, you show me and prove to me that there's nobody that you love and care for. There's nobody that you want to protect from discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas, is there further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Again, if you want to override the mayor's veto, you would vote yes. If you want to vote to sustain the mayor's veto, you'd vote no. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Nguyen, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Schlesinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Bivens, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
Heck no.
Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Tillman, how do you vote?
It's five, five yeses, it requires six votes to override the veto, so the mayor's veto is sustained.
You will see these again, so never fear, you will see them again.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas.
And some of you will be down and won't be able to vote against it.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Items, item C is an ordinance to rewrite and to add to the solid waste ordinance. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend Article 10, Chapter 22 of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances for the purpose of establishing enforcement measures of the solid waste ordinance and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval, is there further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, could we get a brief explanation of, just a reminder of what this entails?
Yes, I'd be, I'd be glad to do that. I'm sorry, Michael has slipped out on us, but, but I'll call on County Attorney Duke Gruber to see if he can't refresh our recollection.
Pop quiz, I'll do it. So this is a rewrite, or not a rewrite, but it's an amendment. And in some ways a rewrite of the solid waste ordinance that we have that presently as it exists is very limited on what we can fine people basically for in terms of dumping stuff on the side of the road or you have a mattress that you want to dump in your front yard or whatever. What this does is allow the solid waste inspectors to either with reasonable cause, so they see something or if they get a judicial order or if there's something on the right of way, not on private property, to try to get to the bottom of who's responsible, issue a notice of violation to the person they think is responsible based on the evidence they see. That, that person then has 10 days to either clean it up or be subjected to a fine or that person can appeal it and say, that's not my responsibility, that's not my property, I didn't dump anything. And then it goes to municipal court where the judge will decide whether or not there's reason to fine that person. It also provides in the ordinance that's changed, a fine schedule that's called a handling fee. It's called, it's not a fine, but it's what it is. Where if we have to clean it up or if the county has to clean it up, there's a fee charge based on cubic yards. So it's in, it's in the ordinance itself, it goes from two to four cubic yards, $75 all the way up to over 20 at $275. So that's, that's the gist of it. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, sir, thank you, I should have remembered that.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Nguyen, go ahead.
Just, just a follow-up for Duke, please. What's the difference between, do we have an ordinance on the books already? And what is the, what are the differences between the current ordinance, ordinance and this one?
This one, I think, and this is where Michael would know more than I do because he drafted this. But I do understa, I do know that right now the definition of solid waste is very, very narrow. For some reason, I don't know why the history of it was like this, but my understanding is, for example, if you had somebody dump, you know, a bunch of, you know, pillowcases and mattresses, that might not be solid waste under our current ordinance, which is obviously not what we're intending. Michael gave the example that basically it just keeps us from dumping, it basically just allows us to pick up refrigerators. And that's obviously too narrow, so that's one change. It expands solid waste into anything that you would think of as solid waste, which is material of any kind that is, that is dumped or otherwise not put into a trash container or dumped at the city dump.
So there was, there wasn't specific, wasn't specific about things, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. So that, and the second thing is, I think the, the fee schedule is different. And I'm, I think I'm remembering this properly, that it gives us more flexibility in terms of if we have to clean something up, it depends on how much you got to clean up as to how much you charge somebody.
I'm all for doing anything we can to clean this mess up around the city, so just wanted clarification.
Is there further, is there further discussion?
Yes, as a, as a matter of process, like right now, it is not happening. So I'm, I'm all for improving our system, but right now, a, a illegal dumping spot is identified and ideally next day or two, if not the same day, code, I mean, excuse me, Public Works will go clean up that location. How would this create a elongated process? Will we just wait and look at it for 30 days while the appeal process is?
No, 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 you can, you can, you know, ultimately you can clean it up. The question is whether that person's responsible or not. So if you have an illegal dumping site, for example, and you find in there, the inspector has what they consider to be good evidence that is coming from a particular person. And that's, and that's up to municipal court judge, there is a court process, so it's not just willy nilly based on what the inspector thinks, there's a court process. The person ultimately only has to pay the fee, even if we clean it up, if they're found to be responsible. But we don't just, you know, and this is a, this is really a solid waste issue from the director. But my instinct would be, we wouldn't just leave it on the side of the road forever. We give them 10 days. I would, my instinct is we would, because that's what the notice is, you give them a notice of cleanup and they get 10 days to clean it up. But if, if it's there for, beyond that, depending on what the work schedule, the solid waste director would be, they would probably go clean it up and then try to get the feedback from the person they think is responsible. But ultimately, that person's not going to have to pay anything unless the. But ultimately, that person's not going to have to pay anything unless they appeal it, unless the judge says that they're guilty.
Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Lucas.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to support this because we do need to do something. There are dumps that are forming all over everywhere, and it's just awful. But my only concern is that some innocent property owner is going to be victimized over and over and over. People have favorite spots, they do a little job and then they take all the trash and all of the stuff and everything, and they take it to that person's property and they dump there late at night. It happens a lot on the east side, and I know in Unionville and other areas. So I'm concerned about property owners being, becoming the victim. And I think at some point, maybe a special group can be pulled together to work on how you keep your property from becoming a dump, how you, you know, what barriers you may erect or whatever you might do to keep your property from becoming, you know, that forever dumping place. Because I can see that as a problem, because most of these places, people are coming to dump over and over and over after and near the same addresses for years. And so I just don't want the property owner to be victimized if they're not the ones who are, you know, dumping or certainly they're not allowing dumping there. So that's just an idea, just something that maybe can be worked on.
Right, right, thank you, Commissioner Lucas, is there further discussion?
Yeah, I guess to Commissioner Lucas's question is, how will the property owners in this sense be protected? Because I see that as a very realistic, it's very rare that someone is dumping illegal trash on their own property.
Right, correct, correct, I think you just nailed it. And I think the judicial, I think the judicial process would let the owner say, this is my house, this is my property, or this is the vacant lot next door to my property. I didn't dump it there, somebody else did. I certainly wouldn't dump stuff on my own property, kind of thing. So the court can.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but.
No, so the court can exonerate the person. But here's something I like better about it. It does provide a fee, so that if it's construction debris and there's no real identification, you know, you don't find envelopes and mail or this or that or the other, and it's just construction debris, this does give a schedule so that the property owner could voluntarily say, well, please, please, would you haul it off? We've got a schedule then that's reasonable and we can provide that service to them.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little problem. We know 100% that it's not the property owner who did the illegal act. And we're going to send them to court. I mean, that's a lot of undue process for someone who stays on the cul-de-sac where feasibly someone could dump something on their property.
I think.
Multiple dumps.
Right, I think, I think the investigator that goes out initially would reach the same conclusion that you do when they talk to the property owner. But if there's some reason for them to think that the person may have dumped it, they can't issue the citation, but then there's the judicial protection involved. But, but I know, I think that the initial decision would not be against the property owner.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Bivens.
I agree, Commissioner Lucas, I've done the same thing, you go to the same place over and over. There's one place I took a picture of that was dumping, and it's happened more than one time. And somebody told me, says, well, why don't you put a sign up there that says, no dumping? And one of these places, I went back and looked and there was a little, you know, a little growth around, but there is a sign that says, no dumping. One of the things I wish, and we brought up something about a camera sometime ago, if we could figure out a way to use some cameras and identify some of these people.
Good idea, good idea, Commissioner Bivens. Is there further discussion?
Commissioner Jones.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Jones, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, just wanted to add, because I think Commissioner Watkins brings up a valid point in that someone could, you know, I think we need to do a really good job of educating the public and publicizing as much as we can about if you see illegal dumping, to please call solid waste immediately. So if someone had a history of saying, hey, I've got illegal dumping down here at the end of my street, just happens to be close to my house. And if that history had been established, then I think that would help the investigator who goes out to know that the homeowner in fact did not do the dumping.
Mr. Mayor.
That along with, that along with some signs that facilities could make and Public Works could help us keep those areas cleaned out whereby the sign is visible. That all those things might help.
They would, County Attorney?
Sure, and just following up on the due process concerns, which obviously that's a concern of mine as well. One of the things that I think is important about this is all of these appeals are going to the municipal court. And this along with things y'all have already done in terms of code enforcement and BLIT tax, that court is going to be a good place where some of these issues can be fleshed out. So for example, if the judge is seeing the same properties over and over and over again, then I think that would be a way that, between the court and solid waste, who are going to be working together on this, they could come up with some ideas like is being discussed, like cameras or things like that for the commission to consider or for the government to consider. But that's one of the reasons, and not just to make sure these people have due process, but the judge is going to see, the court is going to see the same things over and over again. So I think it would help in terms of that, the court sort of vital function in terms of cleaning up some of these dumping sites. So it's going, it's not an expensive process, I'm not saying people, you know, going to court is to be taken lightly, but it's meant to be something that the municipal court here does take a lot of oversight on, to make sure people are not being unfairly ticketed.
Yeah.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is approved. And next is item D, which is a transfer of the sale proceeds from the Willie Hill Annex Building and interest thereon to a fund account for the Rosa Park Square. It's not actually appropriating the money for a specific purpose other than to put it in the account for the Rosa Park Square. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of $900,000 from the debt service fund and the transfer of $54,000 from the capital improvement fund to the land site improvements fund in FY21 budget to allocate funding to Rosa Park Square and for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval, is there further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Jones?
I, I'm all for, as I've said over and over again, I'm all for improving Rosa Park Square and making that an improved focal point that it is. $900,000 is way too much money and it's tied to all three of these projects, which are not good use of the taxpayers' splot dollars, so I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no.
No.
Got two noes, Jones and Nguyen, and any others? Then the ayes have it, six to two, and the ordinance is approved. Item E is an ordinance to dedicate a portion of Jeffersonville Road, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to dedicate a portion of Jeffersonville Road as Senator David E. Lucas Senior Way in honor of David E. Lucas Senior's contribution to his community and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the Whole recommends approval, is there further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Mayor, I first met Representative Lucas many years ago, particularly in 1993. As a young man who'd just come out of the military and I started doing entertainment and our mutual friend was Roger Redding. My uncle served as Roger's insurance agent and Representative Lucas knew Roger, but he'd always told me about this guy and I would watch from afar and got to know him through the world of entertainment and promotions. And so I remember 1993 because he brought Jay Blackfoot to town and as a 22, 23 year old, I went to that spot because folk wondered, what is a young boy like you? What are you doing here at this type of event? How you know about Jay Blackfoot? But I grew up listening to that type of music, but I actually went because I always wanted to meet this representative. And I remember standing out on the, under the foyer, and he came out because we've been doing some entertainment, he knew of me. He said, where are you from? I said, I'm from Macon, grew up in Unionville. He said, I thought you from one of Robinson's. And he puffed his cigar and walked off, never talked to me or whatever. So I've always admired him from afar, but as the years had gone by and fast forward politically and as I got into politics, went back to Roger Redding again and I said, I want to get into politics, and Roger said, I don't know anything about it. Go and help, go talk to David Lucas. And of course, I made that attempt. And one thing is, regardless, he'd always share information. He was very knowledgeable and he shared a lot of information. So I think a few years ago, I was invited to an event. They were honoring two people. This event was huge, it was at Mercer University on their campus. They was honoring Juanita, the late, great Juanita Jordan, and they were honoring now Senator Lucas. And I wasn't going to that event. And Juwan Jackson, who's our school board member, said, no, you should go. You're the commissioner, they invite you should go. I went and I heard so many things that I had never known about Senator Lucas. The story, the story that they told as they honored them both. And I heard these stories and it was just unbelievable that, you know, that some of us who had not known and wasn't always a fan, the number of things that he was responsible for was truly amazing. I had never really sat down and had a conversation with him ever, not a 15 minute, it was always in passing. About a year and a half ago, we went to a convention and I had an opportunity to sit down and have what I call a come to Jesus conversation and meeting and discussion. And it was really an amazing conversation, and his conversations are always the same. Learn, son, learn how to count your votes. And even if things don't always go your way, you got to build relationships. And so regardless of how he felt about you and your politics, he was always, he's always been consistent about learning the process, learning how to work with folks. And for years, and Commissioner Lucas don't know this, but for years, we've all debated in this community, who was the better person to talk to, to get the information from, that when they were mad with you? And I must say, it is Senator Lucas, it is Senator Lucas.
Thank you very much.
I'm honored and privileged to name Jeffersonville Road in his honor because he's done so much. And we have not always politically gotten along, but he's been consistent with me and sharing the information, just being so knowledgeable. And regardless of how he feels, how upset he may be with you, if you ask him a question about politics, he's got an answer and he can tell you how to deal with it. And I just appreciate him and his continued conversations. And thank you so much, and Commissioner Slessinger, I appreciate you in supporting this. And that is why when I had the conversation with Slessinger, may I want to do something for Senator Lucas, what can we do in his honor? And how be fitting the area he's represented and fought for for so long and the stories that y'all hear about is really amazing. And that he's still here today to share knowledge and wisdom with us. And so I appreciate it and I hope everybody can support this and let's move forward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Commissioner Nguyen, I got you next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say I'm supporting this too. I think that Senator David Lucas deserves this area of Jeffersonville Road to be named in his honor. I think that if, just because a lot of people watch this, I think people need to know that there was a pedestrian bridge named after Senator Lucas's father, I believe. So it's not the same person, don't get that mixed up. And that this renaming of, this name being put on Jeffersonville Road is not renaming Jeffersonville Road, but it's kind of like the Jason Aldean Way, where we've got just a little sign there, but it will have David Lucas Senior's name on this section at Jeffersonville Road, which I think is very deserving of him because that's an area he's done a lot of work in and he's very, very effective in. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Nguyen. Commissioner Lucas, did you have a?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple of little known facts about Senator Lucas. He and I have been married for 44 years. Now, we debate about who's put up with the most for those 44, those 44 years. But one of the things I want y'all to know about him is that he used to ride motorcycles. Oh, and guess what? I used to ride on the back of them with him. Who was, oh, we took trips, you know, those were in our courting dates, you understand. And then another thing that I want you to know about him is that if there's a, if somebody says, let's go hunting or let's go fishing, or let's go, let's go quail hunting, let's go shoot turkeys, let's go wild boar, let's go whatever. He, he's right there. And he leaves out early in the morning, some mornings, and goes and gets up in a tree and deer hunts too. So check out his Facebook page and you will see some pictures of Hunter Lucas and all of his camouflage with his wild turkeys holding it up in the air. Those are a couple of interesting things. But one other thing I want to share with you is that David thought of, if there's anybody that could be a father from another mother, it was, it was Duke's father, Denmark Grover, that David served a long, long time in the House of Representatives with. And he looked up to him. He developed some of the little mannerisms that Denmark had. I'm sure they had some heated discussions, but he thought an awful lot of Denmark Grover. And when he needed legal advice or when he needed advice on just anything, he always, always went to Denmark Grover after his father died. So I just want to let you know those little known facts about your senator. And by the way, he is out of the hospital, even survived COVID. He beat COVID and got all the same stuff that Trump got, so I'm glad. And so I just want to share that.
Good.
From another note.
Good, good, good. Commissioner Allen, I see your hand.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, how far of road does this travel on Jeffersonville Road? You know, some, some of it's just small pieces. Is this going to be really dedicated Jeffersonville, all of Jeffersonville Road through Bibb County?
No, 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 it's not, it's not all of Jeffersonville Road in Bibb County, but it is the part of Jeffersonville Road from Emery Highway there in front of Oak Mowgli Mounds National Historical Park, all the way around under the trestle and all the way out to the intersection of US 80. To continue it would require permission from DOT, US DOT, because you're naming the US 80 Highway. So it's between Emery Highway and US 80.
You know, I would, one thing I, I see with all. You know, I would, one thing I, I see with Oliver Bateman and some of the rest of them in the state, that they usually do that on your city, on your local streets. But I hope the next board coming on and maybe Elaine, you can follow up with this, that they take it on out to the county line and get the state involved. But you know, he does deserve that for what he's done for Bibb County. I, I, you have to give kudos for what he's done. He did, he did a good job.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Is there further discussion?
I thought Joe, I, I thought Commissioner Allen was going to tell the story of how they started in politics together.
Oh, oh my, no, no, don't, don't be talking about that.
Not tonight.
Don't be talking about that. All right. Is there further discussion on the ordinance? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is approved. Next is an ordinance to give the Tax Commissioner some additional parking and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize a supplemental budget appropriation from fund balance to the Macon Bibb County Commissioner's budget in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars to provide for the lease of additional parking areas at the Tax Commissioner's office and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is approved. Takes us to item G, which is another ordinance to transfer some money from funding improvements to the median of Poplar Street over to Gateway Park and improving that when, when the construction is concluded. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the reappropriation of sixty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents from two thousand and seventeen SPOS bond proceeds and two thousand and eighteen SPOS revenues to provide funding to parks and recreation for improvements to Gateway Park, authorizing acceptance of related funds from the Macon Bibb County Urban Development Authority and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? And, and I, I think Duke, we do have a typographical error. This says parks and beautification. I mean, parks and recreation, and I think it should be parks and beautification, which is Michael Glisten's department that's going to be working with them and overseeing that improvement. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is approved. That takes us to item H, which is accepting a grant of land for another park, public park, green space park, capacity park. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of approximately twenty-eight point three seven acres of land located at One Thousand Boulevard and dedicating the same for park purposes and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, where is One Thousand Boulevard now?
Um, gosh, I wish we had, Rachel, I wish we had that map we could pull up to, to, to show you. But if you go down Nottingham.
What part of town?
It, it's Shirley Hill right there, adjacent to Shirley Hill. You go down Nottingham and turn right, go up, up Boulevard and it would be on your left and kind of comes down behind South Jackson Springs.
Okay, I just thought I'd seen it, but I couldn't remember. That's good, that's good.
Okay. Yeah, that doesn't really, that doesn't really do it justice, but yeah, that's, that's kind of the, the general area where, where it is. There's Boulevard on the bottom of the screen down there. And the, scroll the other way, Rachel, I dragged the map, I mean, the map the other way, so it's moved to the right. Yeah, a little bit more, a little bit more. There it is, right there, Briar Cliff. So it, it kind of starts at the intersection of Briar Cliff and Boulevard, kind of falls down the hill into the creek and comes up behind Jackson Springs. The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is approved. Next is a resolution for a new scoreboard at the Coliseum. And I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a general construction contract with Daktronics in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred dollars for installation of a new video board and scoreboard system for the Macon Coliseum Centriplex to be paid from two thousand and eighteen SPOS proceeds, cultural and recreation, Coliseum, property line item and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is approved. That takes us to item J, which is establishment of an ad hoc advisory board for equity and civility. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to establish an ad hoc advisory board on equity and civility for the purpose of advising the commission with respect to the pending equity assessment program solicitation and to provide guidance towards creating a more equitable and just community to provide for the membership thereof and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Jones.
Yes, sir. I, as I stated before, I mean, I've been on this board since two thousand and fourteen. I've not seen the need for this. To me, it adds another layer of bureaucracy and we don't need to slow up the process for needed. You know, we've got a good process in place right now. So, and we don't know where the funds would be coming from to, to fund such a program. So I'll be voting no because it's not.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nguyen, Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you. Same here is that I think this is a layer that we don't need. I think the process currently, currently works for us. I'm not sure what this was intending to do, but I think that we have the right people looking at these, these bids and such like that. I just think it's going to slow the process and we don't know the people that are very well, that are going to be on this committee. And I think there'll be a cost that we don't know about either. So I think this is something we need to put on the back burner. I don't think we need to do this right now. Maybe we can revisit it later, but I think this is a, a layer that we don't need to worry about and make our process even harder than it should be.
Very good. Further discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
So, I don't know. I live in Macon, Georgia, and I recognize it to be one of, when we talk about disparity, one of the most disparaged places in the country when it comes to issues of redlining, economic inequality, health inequality. There's something that we're doing wrong because just by living in one zip code or another, ten years of life can matter. And we are the government. We are the ones who provide for the health and welfare. And for us to see these types of inequities happening, they're, they're documented in every piece of data and science that's ever been done on a scholarly level when it comes to Macon, Georgia. We're going to have to come up with ways to effectively and directly address these, these problems because there was holding us back as a community. Just this weekend, we had a mass shooting in our downtown. And I know there's a whole lot of folks that, and I, and I agree that we need to be about the suppression of figuring out how to stop those things from happening, but the ultimate thing is to stop the disparity. We've got citizens in our community who are living in abject poverty that we have a difficult time as a government providing services. On this agenda today, we talked about the issue of, excuse me, illegal dumping. This is an issue that only really exists in our poorest areas of the community. How we're servicing those areas matter because we don't have that same issue on Riverside Drive for some reason. That's innate. There's no one ever dumps trash on Riverside Drive. And if they do, we pick it up the same day or not the same hour. But when we go to Major Thoroughfare's Houston Avenue, Pine owner, Mercer University Drive, trash can sit on those places for weeks. And so I'm asking for us to review that. What's going on? How can we do this better? What is, what is our process that continues the same locations, the same zip code, the same census tract to always be the low-income areas? The same census tract is always the high crime area. It's been like that for forty years in Macon Bibb County. I'm, I'm asking for the ability or the opportunity to look into that a little bit deeper. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Nguyen.
Yes, sir. I think this, this resolution is being convoluted to some degree. This mass shooting we had this past week doesn't seem to have anything to do with this. That's not a poverty issue. There's something else going on there, either drugs or, or gangs or whatever. I don't think that this is what this, this ordinance is, or resolution is being referred to is, the, the equity and civility. I, I, I don't quite gather how that mass shooting had anything to do with what you're talking about now and, and the dumping of trash. I think that when we have this layer in here, I don't know how they're going to figure out, how you're going to figure out who's, who's going to figure out what to do that's not being done or trying to be done already. There's not anybody that wants to have the lower income sections of town have this happen to them. It just happens, but those people maybe can step up to the plate and help with their own communities. I always think that's the way to go is to have our own community step up to the plate and do things to help themselves. But I, I don't see how talking about these other things is, is relevant to this particular issue.
I understand and I respect that you may not immediately see the connections to these connected events, but I would ask you, my, my reading, and I'm still learning a lot about equity and poverty myself, but my reading and again, several scholarly reports suggest strongly that all of this is very much interconnected. And I think it would be wise for our community to take the time to learn what that mindset may be trying to tell us because not just us, but several communities are looking at poverty, what the gun violence has been a symptom of overall poverty in a concentrated area. And I, and I see you shaking your head, but again, I would encourage us to take the time and listen to our scholars and see if we can't figure out what they're trying to tell us because there is something going on here. And again, I would ask that we take the time, even though we don't, don't know, we may not understand it, to just take the time, let someone make us a report and then read it and see if it can help us. That's what I'm asking for now.
And Mr. Mayor, one more comment. The, the monetary issues not being addressed here, how much this is going to cost us and where we're going to get the funding from? I think this is an issue we can talk about, I certainly do. And when you say it's an issue confined, confined to poverty areas, we had a shooting out on Forest Hill Drive, which is in my district. That's not in a poverty area. We had a shooting, we have shootings all over town. So, so it's not just confined to one area. I, I don't, I still don't see where the shooting comes in with this and the, the issues we're having with our crime or homicides in, in Macon Bibb County. I do agree with you that we can look into it, but the money, where are we going to get the money for this kind of thing and how much is it going to cost? You're not addressing that. So let's look at some of those things before we decide to vote on this tonight and look at it later and see where we can come up with funding and the, the people and what we're really looking at. It's just too broad-based for me right now. Another layer that we don't need.
Commissioner Jones, do you have a further comment?
Yes, sir. And, and I know this is well-intentioned and I appreciate it coming from Commissioner Watkins. I don't see the relevance to what he's saying. And all of us are shocked and dismayed and terribly upset about the shootings and, and I'm, I'm sure Sheriff Davis is going to get to the bottom. What's attached to that? I don't know. You know, what, what I think about are issues like we, we, we passed, this board passed an ordinance that says now if you're caught with use of marijuana, it's a seventy-five dollar fine, a little slap on the wrist. So we, we incentivize that kind of behavior when people use illicit drugs and it, it has mind-altering effects. And then also we approve where someone can buy a drink in any bar downtown seven days a week and they can, they can walk from one bar to another, to another. And so when you get to that second or third bar, there's nobody monitoring how many drinks that person has had. Have they had one, two, three, six? Nobody knows because they're not staying in the same place. So we, we've set an atmosphere downtown unintentionally for bad things to happen. And I think, I think they're attached to, we're going to see more of this activity. Unfortunately, I hope we don't, hope and pray we don't. But when we set that kind of stage and that kind of environment where anything goes and you can walk around with an alcoholic drink with any place seven days a week, it's, you're asking for trouble.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Vivens.
I agree with Commissioner Watkins. And sometimes, you know, we say people ought to pull themselves up by their bootstraps when they don't even have shoes. So I think we need to look into this and find a way. None of us know what to do or we'd say that. We need to find a way. And I'm hoping that if we put something together like this, we'll come up with something.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that the mere fact that we're having to discuss this and that there are people opposed to it is an indication of how much this kind of thing is needed. Many will recall, over the last couple of years, we had a report from the Macon One Report. And I think it was, there was a tri-chair that was, that put this together and they finally came out with a report. I think Catherine Dennis and Robo Hatcher and Clifford Whitney were the tri-chairs of that particular committee. The initial meeting was held over at Mercer University, was hosted over there several years ago. And out of all of that came a report, the Macon One Report. And I believe they continued to meet and the, they did a, a summary report to us as commissioners. I know it had to be over the last couple of years. And it led us at that time to start a discussion of the very thing that Commissioner Watkins is trying to put in place as a next step. In that report, they did say that there were some basic issues of inequality in our community and they were rooted in poverty. And one of the things that they brought out was the fact that if you live in one zip code, your life expectancy is ten years lower than if you live in another zip code. What kind of equity is, is that? That points to some basic kinds of things that we need to look at. And from that report, Commissioner Watkins has gone the next step toward our greater understanding of what's behind all this. And if this new administration is indeed in favor of making a difference in the community, then you will embrace this and work in this direction because this is the direction that progressive, forward-thinking people are doing, are going because they realize that there's a lot of work that we have to do because there are so many people that don't have and we try to keep them from ever having. So I wholeheartedly endorse Commissioner Watkins' proposal here. I think that we are going to have our eyes open to an awful lot of things in our community that we need to work on. So, Mr. Mayor, can we call for the question?
Motion to call for the question. I don't think there's any further discussion, so we don't even need to, got a motion to call the question, is there a second?
Nobody wants to call.
Just one last comment, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
I, I didn't, I didn't hear a second.
Commissioner Vivens seconded it.
Well, got a motion, we got a motion and second to call the question. So the question would be, you know, to cut off the bait and call the question at this point. All in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No, let, let people speak.
Okay, the ayes have it, the question's called. So now we're back to the ordinance to establish the ad hoc advisory board. All in favor of that would say aye. If you oppose, would you say no? All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I, I think I've got two noes, Jones and Nguyen. Is anybody else? Jones and Nguyen, so, so the ayes have it, 62, the ordinance is approved. That takes us to item K, which is a resolution to do some upgrades to the security here at Government Center, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute purchase agreement with Major and Associates Incorporated doing business as Cana Communications in the amount of $59,645 for the purchase and installation of an access control security system for the Macon Bibb County Government Center to be paid from capital improvement fund, facilities management, building improvement line item, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is approved. That thing's just, that's the end of old business and takes us to new business. Several items of, of a new business that I'll read and refer. Item A is an ordinance to amend chapters 13 and 15 of the Code for the Office of Authorizing Enforcement of the Abandoned Mobile Home Act of 2019. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item B is a resolution amending the 2016 Oak Muggie Crossing Redevelopment Plan and the Oak Muggie Crossing Redevelopment Plan area, adopting and approving the expanded Oak Muggie Crossing Redevelopment Area, approving execution and delivery by the city, by the county of an amended intergovernmental agreement between the county and the Bibb County School District relating dedication of tax increment in the expanded Oak Muggie Crossing Redevelopment Area. I'm going to refer that to the committee of the whole. Item C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement relating to the transfer of assets and operation of the historic Lynnwood Cemetery. I'm going to refer that to the committee of the whole. And finally, item D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement relating to the transfer of assets and operation of historic Riverside Cemetery. I'm going to refer that to the committee of the whole. These are the only items that have come down now. There may be some additional items to come down between now and Friday. Double check your agenda when it comes out. And these items will be discussed at our committee meeting beginning by Zoom next Tuesday morning at nine o'clock. That's December the 8th at 9:00 AM by Zoom and the clerk will send out an, an agenda on Friday and an invitation to the Zoom meeting. Is there any further discussion or, or final closing comments on non-agenda items or points of personal privilege?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to sort of notice that the Martin Luther King Committee Commission Board has a number of reappointments, a number of folks' terms have expired, and I would very much like to get that to you so that we can consider most, most of the folks wish to continue serving. So.
Right, okay. I, I, I'll get together with you and the clerk and we'll see what we've got and who needs to be reappointed. I'd be glad to do that. Any other points of personal privilege?
Commissioner Jones, I see your hand. Yes, sir. Just one, referring to Commissioner Watkins' proposal, his resolution, I'm all for having a, having public forums, workshops, open to hearing from local experts and gathering information as a, as a board. So I'm all for that. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Yes, sir. Thank, any other points of personal privilege or, or comments to make? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn?
The move.
Got a motion and without, without objection? We are, thank you ladies and gentlemen. Good night, everybody.